Okay. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome back to the City Commission. This is a, uh, this is a joint workshop that the City Commission has requested with the folks who have submitted a unsolicited proposal for the One Stop Shop. Today, it was my understanding that we were going to discuss the report that we had contracted with Ernst &amp; Young with regard to the financial feasibility and other questions that were submitted. And I'm going through my papers and just want to make sure everyone, that we're all on the same page here. I received a City of Fort Lauderdale One Stop Unsolicited Proposal Discussion document. It's not signed by anybody. Oh, shut up. My Siri just went off.
What'd she say? What'd she say?
I was really going there for a while. Anyway, we have a, you all have this?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, my understanding is that this is something that was proffered by Ernst &amp; Young, but they now refuse to put their name to it. So, John, can you talk to a little bit about what's been going on here? This is troubling to me.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so the report that we have from Ernst &amp; Young is what they refer to in their terminology as an unbranded report. So, an unbranded report is a report that is done by the firm on their consulting side for the express purpose of the use of management in its decision-making process. It is not a report that's intended by them for dissemination to the public. Therefore, they have very explicit disclaimers that nobody in the public is allowed to rely on it for investment purposes or anything else. This is different from the type of report that you would see prepared by any of the big four accounting firms that are intended for investment purposes filed with the SEC where they have the opinion page, as it's referred to, wherein it clearly states the work that was performed by the auditor, and it's signed by the firm. And anybody who receives those reports can assert their ability to rely on the information as presented in them when they make investment decisions.
So, so-
Mayor, is that what the scope was?
The city is looking to make an investment here.
And it's intended for management and the commission to make that. So, the, the firm is saying that this report cannot be relied on by third parties. So, anybody in the public, not management, not the commission, those in charge of governance, we are the recipients of the report. It is for us for our decision-making processes. This is not for anybody outside of the elected officials and management to utilize in any capacity that would bring any liability to Ernst &amp; Young.
But aren't we, isn't this, doesn't this fall short of the, of the mandate that we, we would have given to them? I mean, how, as we as commissioners, are expecting us, how are they expecting us to make a decision? And, you know, we don't just make decisions in the vacuum. We ask the public to participate. The public should be relied upon for their opinions. And what you're telling us is that Ernst &amp; Young decided, well, I don't know what you told us, but we're only giving you this. You know, this is, this, this is totally inadequate. Does anyone on the commission have any comments on this?
Mayor, I could, I could-
You're the district commissioner.
I am, and I, I'm actually astounded about this entire process. First of all, I wanted to ask John, so I think you called this an unbranded report, or did you say?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Was there, we had a contract with Ernst &amp; Young, correct, for this document?
We do.
Okay. When that was done, was that done about four months ago? October, November, December? I don't remember exactly when we authorized-
It was December.
And we authorized it, I think, in October or so, or November?
No. So, we have a master agreement that we had put in place with Ernst &amp; Young that was related to the Five Ash Proposal Evaluations. So, when we decided to move forward on having a financial review done of the One Stop Proposal back in December, we utilized the same master agreement that we had. We did another, another task order, if you will, to use, you know, brief terminology. So, we, we did another, another agreement under the master agreement that would encompass the work related to the One Stop.
So, was the unsolicited proposals for the water treatment plant, was that a branded product that we were given?
I, I don't know. I'll defer to Susan Grant, our finance director, since I wasn't involved in-
Signed, sealed, and delivered. They made an appearance at commission. They presented it to the public.
That is correct.
I'm assuming that it was branded as opposed to this being unbranded.
I don't know if it was branded or unbranded, but we were advised by the team from Ernst &amp; Young that their risk management folks, subsequent to the work being done for the Five Ash, have a risk-wide mitigation reduction and are no longer willing to come and do public presentations for their unbranded reports. So, there is a risk-wide, I'm sorry, there is an entity-wide risk mitigation change. It's not related to the One Stop Proposal. It's not related to the City of Fort Lauderdale. This is an entity-wide risk mitigation reduction strategy. And let me, let me, just for-
But who makes that decision going forward? In other words, it was very different when we had them come here for the unsolicited proposals for the water treatment plan.
Right.
A total different program.
Correct. And the same team that did the work for the Five Ash Proposals was the team that did the analysis of the One Stop. And they were, we were all in anticipation of them coming here today to present the results of their work to you, to, to the effect that they had airline tickets and were getting ready to board planes yesterday when they received notification from a different division of Ernst &amp; Young. So, there's a separation between the people that do audits, people that do consulting, and their risk, their, their global risk management team that has oversight over any reports that are released.
When we do a scope of services in a contract, do we include language that says you will appear at a City Commission public meeting to inform the public of your findings?
No. The language that was in the contract said that they would make presentation to key stakeholders. You are the key stakeholder. Management is the key stakeholder. The, the general public is not considered their key stakeholder.
Believe it or not.
But again, they were, if I may though, they were prepared to come here and do this. Their risk management team has final say over what the, the staff that performs an audit can do. Every accounting firm has to have a review partner that has to agree and concur with the reports that go out the door before they can be released. And the reason for that, this all came about after the collapse of Enron and WorldCom and Arthur Andersen, because there was a consensus from the federal government on down that audit teams were not independent of their clients because of the fees that they generate. So, there has to be another division of the firm that has absolutely nothing to do with the client or the fee or the commission structure that reviews the work product that goes out the door for independence. It is that team that said, no.
Okay. So, that team did not say no when the other team came here for the water treatment plan unsolicited proposal?
That is correct.
So, something happened, something happened then at our presentation to the public that got them nervous that they didn't want to present?
No, sir. As I stated before, there was an entity-wide risk mitigation strategy that's important. So, entity-wide, as I said, has nothing to do with the City of Fort Lauderdale, has nothing to do with the Five Ash review, has nothing to do with the One Stop review. This is a cross their platform for all of their clients.
Okay. So, they will never, across their platform for all of their clients, they will never appear, and I'm sure they work for other governments, I'm sure they do this kind of work for other municipalities, so you're telling me that they will never appear at any other municipality public meeting to inform a commission or a council and the public of their work? Or answer questions?
I can't tell you what ENY is going to do for any other client other than us. I can only tell you what ENY has conveyed to us in their disclosure documents.
And ENY had nothing in their contract with us that mandated that they would appear before the commission to explain their work, answer questions, or speak to the public?
No.
No. Well, I find that, I find that troubling.
Isn't this a difference between the branded and unbranded? Do we get any clarification if we turn this into a branded report that they can come and present to us and the public?
So, I reached out to them after we became aware of this, asked them if, if there is, to your point, a, a way that we could turn this into a branded report. And again, the response back from them was that there is an entity-wide risk mitigation strategy that's being employed. So, a, a short answer to that would be no.
Well, I would like to say then, Mayor, that I'm, I'm exceptionally happy that we voted not to hire Ernst &amp; Young-
It's good foresight.
-to do a behemoth financial analysis. We saved ourselves a lot of headache. We saved ourselves a lot of money, and I'm thrilled that we did not go forward with that contract, because if this is any indication of our relationship with Ernst &amp; Young, I would say that, City Manager, we should never hire Ernst &amp; Young again for any kind of work for the City of Fort Lauderdale. So, now to the report, Mayor. You asked if anyone had any comments. So, I printed it out, and by the way, I will say that I find it troubling that the City Commission would get a report like this, a backup, very important piece of backup to an agenda item around three, 3:30 in the afternoon, the day before a City Commission meeting, and then the public not get it till around 7:00 PM. So, we have got to do better. The, the commission certainly deserves to have information in advance, and the public certainly deserves to have information backup. That being said, as soon as I printed this out, title page, City of Fort Lauderdale One Stop Shop Unsolicited Proposal Discussion. Well, I thought that we contracted, now, correct me if I'm wrong, John, we did not pay for this, right? The applicant paid for this?
That is correct.
How much did they pay for this?
I believe the amount was $65,000.
Well, they should get their money back. Okay. So, what I would say is simply, if you look at the cover of this report, it's a discussion. It's not even an analysis. It's not even a report. It's a discussion. Not only that, but the cover page has an old, old conceptual, conceptual site plan diagram that has changed dramatically since this. So, who are they talking to, Ernst &amp; Young? That, that cultural center has gotten much smaller. The, the blade has gotten much smaller, and I believe they've moved much further west on the site than we see on the first page.
The food emporium has been moved also.
Yes. So, I, I, I mean, right off the bat, the cover photo is, is inaccurate. It's incorrect. It's wrong.
It's misleading.
And then, and then as I go through this, and by the way, 18 pages for $65,000, and several pages only have two lines on them, and there are about four pages that are just a big blow-up diagram, which is incorrect. So, we're down to about maybe eight, nine pages. $65,000 divided by nine is what?
A lot of money.
A lot of money per page. And then, if I go through the findings and the information, it looks like they either Googled some information about entertainment venues, and they plugged it in here, and then they gave us these charts and graphs that are really not valuable at all. Page six, again, is just a repeat of page one, which is incredible. And again, as I go through this whole thing, there's so much information here that they relied on from an old draft in September of 2021. I mean, I know that the City Manager is working on the comprehensive agreement that we've been waiting for, but I know that the information that they've relied on in this, in this quote "discussion" unquote, is, is old, out of date, and let me ask this question. Was there scope, John, to actually go into the comprehensive agreement, or was there scope simply to look at the business model and the financials?
So, the scope is to look at the business models and financials and any other areas of risk that they identified while doing their review that they thought would be worth bringing to the attention of, again, those tasked with making a decision about the project. So, if they observe something in another area, they are obligated to bring those concerns forward. So, if they're looking at something as it relates to the comprehensive agreement that could be a business risk to the city, then they would also mention that. There are a number of items along those lines that they brought to our attention, which were communicated separately to the City Manager and the City Attorney.
Well, you know, as I go through this, first of all, I, I don't understand even why they make assumptions that are based on old, bad information in a comprehensive agreement. Again, I thought that they were focusing simply on the business model and the economics and the wherewithal of the applicant to carry out what they are proposing. That's the kind of information that I was interested in, and I didn't get it, not, not by going through this. And by the way, this took me 13 minutes to read, but I was going to actually, after my District Two pre-agenda meeting last night, I was going to actually ask for a deferral in that maybe was premature to even talk about this today, but then when I saw that it took about 10 minutes to read, I said, nah, I'm not going to ask for a deferral, because anyone can read this in 10 minutes, because there's nothing new and most of it is incorrect. So, I don't think a deferral is even necessary, because I don't know what we're deferring. There's nothing here to defer. There's one, one conclusion in this report, that we're not getting enough money in terms of a license fee or what some people call rent. However, even that, even that one finding is couched later at the end of the report by saying that, well, maybe it's okay if construction costs are higher than projected and revenue was lower, then maybe the fee is okay. So, I mean, really, and that was really the one, the one key finding. The rest of their information about the comprehensive agreement, all incorrect. I thought we were no longer looking at pilot, payment in lieu of taxes. I, I, I think that some of the information, the square footage, the interior spaces, the exterior spaces, everything is incorrect. I, I just cannot believe that this document took months, months to prepare and, and present to us, because it's, it's really, Mayor, a very inadequate document, and we didn't learn much from it. I'm just glad that we didn't pay for it. So, that's about all I have to say at this point, although I do want one clarification that came up at my pre-agenda meeting, and I've heard this over and over, because Alan, at the last, the last meeting, when I asked about why things were taking so long and what was going on, and when we were going to get this report, et cetera, et cetera, you had mentioned that it was because of, and you said, and I'm going to be very careful in my words, and basically you said that it was the fault of the applicant for not getting information in a timely manner, and there were delays in getting information. So, I want to ask you, where did you get that information from?
That information was coming from Ernst &amp; Young, and that they were seeking additional information and they weren't receiving it.
Well, then, I find that statement totally not credible. After reading this report especially, I would not rely on them telling you that there were delays. I'd like to ask the applicant if there were delays and where they came from. May I ask one of the applicant?
Yes. Ms. Toothaker, you want to step up?
Yes, because same question. I, I want to put this issue to bed, because many people feel that the delay and the lack of information in this report, I'm sorry, rather quote "discussion," is your fault, including the City Attorney who told us last time, but he just told us that he was relying on information from Ernst &amp; Young, which I find not credible at all. Can you explain why they're saying that the applicant did not present information in a timely fashion?
Thank you, Commissioner Stephanie Toothaker and Matt Sacco on behalf of Damn Good Hospitality and One Stop Shop. Jeff John is here as well. We heard that as well. We heard that we were being non-responsive, and neither Matt nor I had been contacted by anybody to ask for any information, so we reached out to, to the auditor to ask if there was information that we were supposed to be providing that we were not aware of. And Mr. Herbst put us in touch with Ernst &amp; Young, and we asked the same question. Are you looking for information from us that we have not provided you? Because my phone hasn't rung, and Matt's phone hadn't rung, and the response back was, well, we hadn't reached out to you yet. So, I think unfairly, we were being blamed for not providing information we'd not been asked for.
And how many times were there meetings, phone calls, communications between you or anyone else on your team and Ernst &amp; Young?
There were at least probably four that I'm aware of. The most recent one was on Friday of last week.
Okay. And that started when around November or so?
I was just trying to confirm when the last time, the last time that we presented to the City Commission was on September 21st of 2021. That was the last time that we made a formal presentation. I don't believe there was another discussion after that, so I think that's around the time that it was decided that, that we were to work with Ernst &amp; Young and have them do an audit on, on our proposal.
Okay. And one last question. When did this unsolicited proposal first come forward to the City Commission?
Tell me.
Anyone?
I believe it was the year before. I believe it was-
Like, like 2020?
I, I, I think so. Let me confirm. I don't want to give you an incorrect answer.
Okay. And I asked that question, because I'm really just wondering, how long has this been going on? And we, we wait, and we wait, and we wait, and then we authorize a, a reputable company, I'm, I'm sure everyone knows it, Ernst &amp; Young, and we, we, we hire them, well, actually, we hire them, but you pay-
We did.
-for this so-called report. And I'm just wondering, how long this goes on? And why are we getting such awful work products? So, but you think you came to the, the first time you ever contacted the City Commission in writing that you wanted to do this project was in the beginning of 2020?
I believe that was in, it was the beginning of 2020.
Okay. So, two years.
I'm being, that Matt's echo just-
About two years. So, we're, we're, we're two years in on this-
Yes.
And, and this is what we get after two years. Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for letting me have that time.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few, few questions if you-
Go right ahead.
Before you, as you're putting your thoughts together, Commissioner, I just looked it up, that we received the unsolicited proposal on June 19th, 2020.
A year and eight months ago. Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thanks. So, the auditor, you said that the ENY team was boarding planes, getting ready to board planes yesterday, right?
That's correct.
And what were they coming here to do, yes, as of yesterday?
They were coming here to present this report to the commission.
In a public forum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this workshop?
Yes, sir.
And then, they got a call that, stop the plane, get off the plane, don't go, you can't do that?
So, they received word from their risk and compliance team that they were not able to present. They were still willing to come down, and we told them, well, if you can't present, there's really no reason for you to be here.
Okay. Okay. And when did we get this report? And I'm going to use quotes around "report," because that's Sheriff Commissioner Glassman's perspective.
We got the final report, and Susan, you can confirm the time for me, but we got the final report yesterday, and I don't remember the exact-
Early afternoon.
Thank you.
Yet the, the discussion made its way to give you some ideas to how it progressed through. It made its way through, after some recommended, recommended changes last week, it had to go back through whatever their quality review group is. It didn't do that until yesterday morning, so by the time it was sent to us with the word "draft" removed from it, it was early.
And, and just to add to that, so we had gotten a draft report from EY roughly a week ago. We, excuse me, we shared that report with Stephanie and Matt so that we could discuss any factual errors that were in the report. So, to your point, Commissioner, if there was anything that was factually wrong in the report, that was the opportunity for the applicant to let EY know that the- the report, that was the opportunity for the applicant to let EY know that these things were incorrect. And we made a number of changes to the report as a result of that discussion. There was then a second draft. There was some comments from the city attorney's office about some things that they didn't think were appropriate for the report, that were good information, but didn't think it needed to be in the report. So there were some additional changes that were made. At a certain point, there were enough substantive changes made, made to the report that it needed to go back through their quality review process internally in the firm. So it was no longer just a change of a comma or a word here or a grammatical error there. There were enough substantive changes to the report that it need to go back through their quality control process. So we found out about this on Friday. It went through their quality process over the weekend. We kept hoping we were going to get the report over the weekend. It became clear that we were not. We got it Monday morning or Monday afternoon.
Okay, so you got the draft report a week ago. When you got the draft report, what was your reaction to the report?
I think that the information that's in the report is valuable and useful for decision-making.
Okay, so you think this is a good report?
I do.
Helpful report?
I do. I think there are issues that were raised by EY that need to be taken into consideration by the commission as they decide how and whether or not to move forward with this project at this time. So when it, what, what EY was attempting to do was determine a couple of things. Is the applicant, as, as outlined in the, in the, in the discussion points that they raised there, is the applicant knowledgeable in the industry? Okay, do they have sufficient financial capacity to do this? Do they have expertise in constructing and operating these things? Are the assumptions in their business plan reasonable? Is the value that the city is going to receive for this financially appropriate to the value of the site that they're going to be given and the rights that they're going to be given under that? So those are the things they were looking at. I think the comments that were made by EY are, are both valid and important. So I think the substance of the report gets to the issues that the commission needs to consider in, in its process of deciding how to move forward at this point.
Okay, all right.
But doesn't this seem like a ghost report?
I don't. I just have a different perspective, I don't.
Tell me, I mean, this is, it seems like a ghost report, like it just showed up on our doorstep. It's like a, a baby being put in a carriage in a, in a basket and then the, the parent running away. Like, what is, how are we supposed, as a, as a responsible commission, how are we supposed to react to something like this? You know, this is not something that it would be, I mean, we would be committing malfeasance if we accepted this as a basis for making a decision when, when, when no one is signing their name to this, like an anonymous letter. And, and I don't, I mean, how should we respond to this, John?
Well, I could see why their quality control people, after reading it, said, don't get on that plane.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it makes perfect sense to me. It really does.
So, so there's two issues with that, Mayor. I think there's an issue that relates to the timeliness of, of the deliverable. And I agree with you completely that the lateness of the report diminishes its utility for you in terms of making a decision at this point in time. And I think the appropriate alternative to that is to defer this discussion to a later point of time till everybody's had an opportunity to digest this and ask whatever questions I think you are, are desirous of having an answer to and allow EY to respond to you, which they have offered to do, is, is, is either engage with the commissioners in a shade session, which we thought we would be able to, and then we found out in reliance on the attorney's office that we can't do a shade meeting at this point. But originally they thought that that would be appropriate. When we found out that it couldn't be a shade meeting, it had to be a public meeting, they were still amenable to doing that until their risk folks got on board. So they are more than happy to sit down and discuss with each of you individually, all of your questions, all of your concerns, all of your comments, help walk you through how they gathered their information and how they come to their conclusions. So the idea is not that they dropped this on your desk and ran away, it's that they will brief you individually to any extent that you want, but they are not going to present in a public forum. So.
But don't they understand we're government? Everything has to be in, in the gov, in, in, in the, in the open.
And in Florida is.
But I'm just saying that, that why would we want to block out the public from discussions? I mean, that would raise, I mean, if I weren't on the commission, I would reason, I would immediately raise suspicion as to what smoke-filled room is going on back there that they're making, cutting deals. You know, this is not appropriate. And for them to, and for them to put this, put us in this position is, is, I mean, I just think that's really ridiculous. I don't know, we can't possibly go forward. This, to me, this is a worthless piece of paper.
So let me be clear for everybody in the room. I'm not here to defend Ernst &amp; Young.
I'm not here, I'm asking.
No, but, but I'm, I'm being asked questions that I don't have the answer.
Just say you don't know.
We progressed all this time under a certain set of assumptions. The assumptions that we were under is that this would be no different than the presentation that you got from Five Ash. It's the same team doing the same work under the same.
How do we know that? How do we know that? How, how do we know any of that?
Well, I can tell you and our finance director can tell you, having dealt with them, we are talking to the same people.
But how do we know that they're the ones that wrote this report?
Because we got it from them. I got an email from them.
Know that?
I have an email from them.
We don't.
So now, so now you can, now you are answering for them.
I'm not answering for them. You asked me, how do I know who it came from? I'm telling you, I got an email from the same gentleman that did the presentation for you on Five Ash.
But do you see the position that that puts this commission in?
Yes, I do. But again, I'm not defending EY.
Are you the point person on this project?
It was a collaborative effort between myself and, and members of, of the management team.
How many members of the management team?
The finance director.
So just you and the finance director and Ernst &amp; Young were responsible for us receiving this and how we received it and the way it was done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't, Ernst &amp; Young seems not to understand who the client is, Mayor. I think the client is the people of the city of Fort Lauderdale.
Client is the people.
Am I right?
Yes, you are correct.
And the people have a right to understand a full analysis of the project and I, I don't understand where that disconnect is.
Well, this seems to be a, it's not just, I think this is not just a, a company-wide undertaking, it seems to be in the whole, the whole industry. I mean, yesterday was Donald Trump's, uh, financial firm says, oh, we can't, you can't rely on anything we've said to you in the last 10 years, we're, we're backing off. I mean, what is going on in the industry that everyone, all these accounting firms are just saying, oh, well, all those representations we made, don't rely on them because, you know, we decided that our opinions are no longer good. And that's what this company is saying to us. Anyway, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Thanks, Mayor. John, when you got the report a week ago, the draft report, was it branded with EY?
No, it was not.
Why was it not branded with EY?
It was never intended to be branded by EY. So when they, when, when we initiated this process early on, they said, this is going to be a non-branded report. We didn't anticipate at that time that the non-branded report was going to be a different process than what we'd already gone through with Five Ash, where you have had public presentations. So there was no reason for anybody on staff, from myself or from the manager's side, to anticipate a different outcome. We could not have possibly known that their risk mitigation folks were going to pull the plug at 12 o'clock yesterday.
Okay, even though they were presenting the report in a distinctly different format than previously?
There was no reason to expect a different outcome when the process was the same. We could not have anticipated this outcome at the time we began this process a couple of months ago.
Why were they presenting a non-branded presentation a week ago?
The way in which we were doing this work was, at the outset, told that this is going to be a non-branded report. We didn't see a problem with that. It was a report to management and we expected it to take place in a forum that would allow all the questions that you all have, valid questions, important questions. We expected that team was going to be here to defend their work and their conclusions.
Okay, so let's talk about.
Mayor, one, why is there such a difference with this quote, discussion that was presented to us from EY? Why is there such a difference in terms of detail, length? You name it, between this and what we read and what we heard in shade meetings regarding the unsolicited proposals for Five Ash replacement? Why, why are they night and day?
I can't tell you.
They're night and day? Do you admit they're night and day?
I don't admit anything. I can't tell you it's not my report. I take no ownership of it. It's not mine, sir.
You, you read both reports.
I've read both.
And you can't tell me that they're night and day?
So I can't tell you that the work that was done is any different on either project. What I can tell you is that the summarized version that you have in front of you is substantially less in scope than the presentations that were done for you on. Absolutely.
Yes, and that's putting it mildly because there is, there is no work here compared to the work that was put into when we received for the four unsolicited proposals for Five Ash. I mean, it, it's just, it's just astounding that it's actually the same company, Mayor, that, you know, that did what we're looking at now in front of us versus what we read and what we were presented. That's all.
What are next steps?
Yeah, what happens next? We still need an analysis.
I mean, I, I think there are some items in here that we can discuss.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I don't, I think like John said, there are items in here. I mean, maybe it looks different than, you know, Five Ash and everything, but.
But how do we know, how do we know, how do we know that any of these items are based on truth? How do we, they're just, just.
Well, I would, I would.
We can't ask anyone, too.
Well, I, I do believe we have some data in here that we could probably discuss.
We could discuss it, but, but.
Maybe we can ask questions.
Where do they derive? I could come up with a, I could come up with something just like this.
I'm going to, I'm going to assume, and this is really bad to do that, I'm going to assume that the information they gave us from pages, you know.
Who's they?
Ernst &amp; Young, because we know, we know it, we know it came from them. It might not be branded, they might not be here and they might not have flown down, but it did come from them. And they do have some recommendations, they do have some analysis, and I think we can go through a few.
Go ahead.
All right, page 11. And I think we can ask the applicant and just see, I, I mean, these are just kind of maybe bigger picture and this is a little bit more about their, their business plan. And, you know, we have the conceptual drawings and development, but I know we're going to discuss this and we're also going to have to come up with what happens next, I agree. And maybe it's a little bit more of a comprehensive agreement. I, I do think we can probably ask some questions and.
Go ahead.
We can let the public ask some questions.
You want to ask questions of the applicant?
I, I, I do believe there's some information in here that we can ask the applicant.
Why don't you, go ahead.
And I do believe since we have invited the public, maybe we could, I don't know if anyone from the public's here or has signed up.
Mr. John, Stephanie, you want to come up to the podium?
I, I think we can. I, I mean, I know we're, you know, upset about how we were given all this information, but I do think there are some summaries in here that we can probably discuss.
Go ahead.
And then figure out what's next. And then, hello, thank you all for coming. Since we have you today, let's just have a conversation. And then let's see if anyone from the, the public has any, any comments also.
There are four people, five.
All right, so I'm kind of looking at page 11. I understand all, everything that Commissioner Glassman said, starting with the image on the front page. When I.
Can we pull this up so the public can see this?
That's probably a good idea.
Because no one's gotten it, again.
Turn her back up, I'm on page 11.
Yeah, hold on, let's just get the IT.
Thank you.
It was posted yesterday.
Yeah, it was just posted yesterday, but can IT, Chris, can we get someone to put this up there? Please.
We can.
Thanks. Sorry, go ahead. Vice Mayor, I just want to.
We have like maybe five things.
Sure people can see this.
If anyone has some bigger picture. So on page, oh, well, wait.
I'm going to email it to you.
So a couple of big picture items too, while we're waiting for the images, you know, is, is the, is the rent reasonable per year? You know, they weren't really sure if the park, they couldn't quite justify, you, you say you're going to spend $10 million on the park, but they couldn't quite see what the park looked like to really evaluate if it was a $10 million park. Those were a couple of big things that popped up. Okay, so let's go to page 11 then. Are we on page 11?
How do I share?
Where am I looking?
Oh, you see it? Oh, it is, okay, all right.
Is it up?
Yep.
Can't see.
Yes, I can.
All right, so it's there. Okay, so where it says project design is in conceptual development and the cost estimate will continue to be refined. So I guess when, when will we be able to get, I guess beyond the conceptual development to really kind of nail down these numbers? Because we were asking Ernst &amp; Young to help us nail down the numbers. So what would that look like? So we would have a better assurance that this is the real number.
So Vice Mayor, as you know, when you do an unsolicited proposal, the comprehensive agreement comes before the development of the site plan. This audit was performed on the business plan and the reason that they don't have actual drawings and actual site plan is because we haven't developed that yet. These are conceptual renderings and they're drawing, I think, assumptions from conceptual renderings where they, they really, that's not, that wasn't really part of the analysis, in my opinion. So the, the actual site plan would come later and would go through your regular DRC process through the process that all site plans go through.
Okay, so this is an interesting kind of procedural issue, you know, should we be looking, should this analysis come when maybe we have that site plan and more information or is it too late at that point for us to make that decision? My understanding with P3s is it's really never too late to pull the plug, but obviously we don't want you to spend a lot of money doing all this work.
Right, so my understanding was that the, that the analysis was on the business plan.
Right.
Not on a rendering. The business plan is how many live events will be held in a venue that permits live events per year? How many people will come to a restaurant that has a, a conceptual size? What they've done here is they've compared, compared construction costs to a strip center mall. I, I, I actually don't even really understand what they did, to be honest. So I, I think that part of the analysis.
Is hard to evaluate.
I wouldn't, it's hard, it's hard to evaluate because we have not developed a site plan and I will just share with you, even when you do a site plan, and you know, I, I work with a lot of developers that work on site plans, we develop site plans that go through your DRC process. I could not tell you at the front end, ever, what it's going to cost to build that because you don't start building your pro formas until you develop your construction documents and construction documents don't happen until you have to, after you have site plan approval because construction documents are very expensive to produce.
Right.
And you don't require developers to develop construction documents upon which general contracting firms then start doing their analysis, their pre-con, their, the pre-con is the, is the part of the process that tells you, this is how much it's going to cost to build this. That happens after site plan approval because you don't, you would never ask developers to spend the money on construction documents that early in the process.
Okay, so we'll give you page 11. That doesn't really help us, so we'll strike that. So let's go to 12. This is part of the business operations that you were talking about. So it does say that the 140 events per year is, is not conservative. Like, that's really, like, if you were a top-tier facility, that's how you would be operating. So how do you all respond to that?
Jeff does between 130 and 150 live events every year and has done.
Jeff would say, I am a top-tier and I know what I'm doing.
He is a top-tier, right, so. He is a top tier, right, so.
So I don't think we.
20 years.
I don't think, I don't disagree with that statement. I do agree that Jeff knows what he's doing. I probably wouldn't have had to pay to understand that. So I, I do agree, based on his history and what he's done, that he, he does, definitely knows what he's doing. So, okay, so you're just going to say we are top tier, so we just, we understand it's not conservative, but we understand we're going to do that, unless there's a pandemic. Okay, so page 13 talks about, they're including the, how you're funding it. 65% debt, 35% equity, and then the three-year construction loan taken out by a four-year mini perm. If not. I don't understand that, but it says it's atypical. So is this, is it typical, is it atypical? How do you all respond to this financing model being atypical? Because this is obviously probably really what we are talking about, the financing. Is the financing really getting along?
So let me be clear, Vice Mayor, so we had, I think I said we had four different calls with, with Ernst &amp; Young. And to be clear, I wasn't on every one of those calls. Matt and, and Jeff were, along with our accounting team and, and Jeff's partners. This is actually a little different than what we, the information we provided. What we said is that we were going to provide 35% equity, and the 65% would come from whatever's available in the market. Which is pretty typical for a development project.
So that probably seems typical, but then they get into, you know, the semicolon, which is that three-year construction loan taken out by the four-year? Is that what they're referring to as being atypical?
I don't know.
Okay, so that's where, I guess when I'm just looking at this, I'm looking for any big picture red flags, like everything. Yes, I know Jeff's going to do a great job, but is everything else kind of typical and, and kind of? Can we, can we rely on this?
Well, I would say that, I will, I will share this with you. Based on the many projects that I work on, 30% equity, 30 to 70 is a pretty typical equity debt split. That's pretty, that's a fairly normal split when you do a development project, and this is being treated like any other development project.
Okay, I don't know. John, do you have any more information about what the debt includes this three-year construction loan taken out by? It seems to me like that's where the front is going to start, which seems like that is atypical. And maybe we need to just kind of ask somebody else. I don't know if we're disagreeing with the 65-35 split. It's, I, I just, like I said, the more atypical concerns may a little bit, something we need to do a little bit, do a deeper dig.
So I think what, I think what EY is saying here with respect to that is that the pay-down period is not that, it's not that the 30% equity, 70% debt, that's not the atypical part.
Right.
The atypical part is the pay-down period. So typically, you put debt in place that is more reflective of the useful life of a facility. So for example, anytime we finance something, if we're building a 30-year water and sewer plant, we don't, we don't pay it off in three years. By doing that, you're front-loading all the expenses associated with the facility up, up at, at, at the beginning of the project. Typically, you want to spread it out over the life of the project. So I think that's what they're trying to get at here is that by, by front-loading the debt service, you're essentially committing to very high levels of debt expenditure and a lack of profitability on the project in its early years, as opposed to spreading the debt out over the life of the facility and making it more easily serviceable.
That makes sense, because if you go on to read the final bullet on that page 13, it says because of the high cost of debt service in the early years, that the project will not be profitable into five years. And I do believe your payments to the city do reflect that.
I want to be clear that this information did not come from us. This is not, this was not information that we provided. I don't know where Ernst &amp; Young is getting it from. We did not say that we were doing this. This was a, I don't know if it's an extrapolation or an assumption, but this did not come from our team.
And that's what concerns me about this entire report.
All right, well, I was just, yeah, going to ask if some of these.
Where this stuff is coming from.
Assumptions were, were accurate. So you're saying the assumption on this, this three-year construction loan may not even be accurate? Or you're, you're applying that it's not accurate?
It's not accurate. And I, and I want to also be clear, we, we did have, we were offered an opportunity to have a call with Ernst &amp; Young. Our team had a call with Ernst &amp; Young, with our, with our, our consultants, our, our accountants on Fri, late on Friday afternoon, this past Friday afternoon. We were not given a copy of the report. We were able to see some screenshots of the report, and we pointed out there were some pretty significant errors and asked if we could get a copy of the report so we could digest it and respond to it. I want to be very clear, we received the port, the report at the same time the public did, which was yesterday.
Okay, so you don't really want to even use this working document as a.
We can't, this is, it's riddled with errors and old information, and it, a lot of it didn't come from us. It's extrapolations and assumptions and things that it's hard for me to even respond to because they didn't come from our team.
Vice Mayor, also, you know, think about this. And I, I really appreciate the questions you're asking about the percentages and the debt and the repayment. However, how much of that is actually based on what they've given us in terms of sizes of the buildings? Square footage, how much it's going to cost the buildings, buildings? When, when the dimensions they've given us for the buildings, both exterior and interior, are all incorrect.
Yeah, so you're just saying.
All incorrect.
I was trying to see if there were some big picture items that we could at least discuss, but it doesn't sound like there are. Because, yes.
It's all based, even, even these numbers, even these percentages, even all this discussion that they have on page 11 and 13, it's all incorrect based on the incorrect information on page four, the proposal itself.
Okay, so it sounds like I'm not going to analyze this a lot further because there's no agreement. Ernst &amp; Young isn't even here to help explain this to us. Thank you, John, for explaining that.
So Vice Mayor, if I could just address the point that Stephanie just made. They asked us for a copy of the report, and we told them we can't disseminate it to you before we've given it to the commission. So just so you understand why they were not given a copy of the report, I will not send a report to anybody else before you've had a chance to see it.
Yeah, thank you. But I think whether Stephanie got it a week ago or an hour ago, she'd probably still have the same conclusion. So that's, I think, more, that's what's more concerning to me, is that we don't have a document we can have this conversation with. So now we do have to really discuss Plan B. What do we, what do we do from here?
Well, we're waiting on a comprehensive agreement. So Alan, how are we doing with that?
We're doing well. It's almost done. Again, as you know, we've been working, I've been working on my personal draft. Haven't shared it with the city manager yet or with Ms. Doofaker, but that's about ready to be communicated to them. Couple of things we're checking on. Partly because we got a little sidetracked because of this report. Not to throw, not to throw fire on the Ernst &amp; Young, and not to throw fuel on the Ernst &amp; Young fire, but I did have issues with the report that initially went into the comprehensive agreement, which was outdated, and also made reference in the first draft I saw to ground leases and rent, which has nothing to do with this comprehensive agreement. So kind of got sidetracked in the last week, but we should have something to Stephanie.
So is anything that we are reading in this quote discussion unquote helpful to you with regards to the comprehensive agreement?
No, these are all business. Well, again, the first iteration went into the comprehensive agreement, you know, to a good extent, which is what I objected to, which that would have been a problem because it was outdated information. So things that have already been rectified and dealt with. But on this particular report, no. Because the, the, those business terms or whatever financial aspects of the comprehensive, that'll be filled in by you all, essentially. You're all going to decide and, and negotiate that with the proposer. I'm not changing numbers or anything, we're just going on the legal side. That's not my decision.
Right, so we can digest this, we can put it aside, we can do with it whatever we like. But basically, when you come forward to us with the comprehensive agreement, that's where the rubber's going to hit the road.
Yes, I'm not using this report for my.
Correct, and I don't blame you.
So may I, may I weigh in? Because this creates a real problem. Because you, as a commission, have asked us as staff to go ahead and do an analysis of the financial and business model, and yet I'm being told that it's constantly shifting and we're on quicksand because the business plan, the comprehensive agreement, the buildings are changing. So I just want to point out that we can't possibly meet your expectations of a financial analysis if we're not working with a product. So we, we take the initial product, we do our financial analysis, and we're all happy to accept or reject it.
Who did a financial analysis?
Ian Y.
Please, please. I, I'm going to disagree with you up and down on this one. This is absolutely ridiculous that you're sitting there and you're even telling me that you did a financial analysis.
No, I'm saying we are being, so I'm being asked to do a financial analysis of the Bahiamar, for example, but maybe that's still in flux, too. So how do I do that?
No.
It presents a problem for me, Commissioner.
No, that is, that is, that is a false choice, and that is, that is not even comparable to what we're talking about here. That is a totally, totally different animal. And again, I reiterate, I'm thrilled that I didn't take your advice and go with Ernst &amp; Young on a financial analysis of Bahiamar, because that would have been a nightmare. If this is any indication of what we were going to go through with Bahiamar, God help us, this is ridiculous.
But I'm talking about process, Commissioner. So at what point do we begin to do our analysis?
You had four months, you had four months from the time you asked us for, to do a financial analysis.
But we don't have a comprehensive agreement to do an analysis on.
No, you don't need that comprehensive agreement to do an analysis.
I need to know the size of the building.
And then let me ask you a question. What is the downside if this team, and God forbid, I don't want this to happen to them, but what if they, what if they finish this project and go belly up? What's the worst thing that can happen to the city? We get a $10 million park, and we get two buildings, and in today's economy, we'll fill those buildings up in two seconds and make lots of money? What's the downside for the city that we have to worry about this so much right now?
Florida statutes require that you do a comprehensive financial analysis.
And look how well that worked out. And you were in charge of this.
I'm not in charge of it, Commissioner.
You are the auditor of the city, and you're the one who asked us to do the financial analysis, and this is the information that we relied on, that you would come back, and then we get this. This is a, it's a garbage. Garbage. And for you to even sit there and not be able to tell me that it's a piece of garbage is very troubling to me. Because everyone who's looked at this knows that this is a piece of garbage.
Commissioner, if you're dissatisfied with my work, I work at the pleasure of the commission. If you no longer are satisfied with what I'm able to do for you, then please, if you don't have confidence in my work, there's a course of action.
Yeah, and we're going to get to that when we get to the next agenda item on the conference meeting, when we're worrying about, the audit department is worrying about doing an audit on sexual assault kits. Meanwhile, the commission has made very clear what our priorities are, what the projects are that we need attention to. And we're worrying about auditing the, the police chief, his refereeing. We're worrying about sexual assault kits procurement from four years ago? Those are the priorities that you're worrying about?
Those are violations of internal control, yes, those are concerns, sir.
Okay, good, thank you. I'm good.
Well, I do believe there's a process we have to follow, and I do believe state statute will dictate that.
Without a doubt.
And I do believe we need to do it to the best of our ability. Yes, you know, maybe we didn't have the final site plan to have the final numbers. So maybe what we were asking for Ernst &amp; Young, I don't know. Maybe what we were asking wasn't even quite ready to be asked. Maybe we do need to next, just kind of get into the comprehensive agreement. And then, you know, maybe internally, I do believe John and his team do a good job. I do believe we have to audit other things, like even small things, like I, I had to, you know, I, I was getting a phone fee that I, I wasn't supposed to get anymore, and I had to pay the city back, okay? So they do need to catch small things like that, and I did it. I'm thankful they caught it. So there are little things and there are big things. So I do appreciate the work.
Actually, I think I caught the phone bill.
Yeah, you probably did, but you usually catch everything, so.
But Vice Mayor, I think, I think that the simple question we asked Ernst &amp; Young was, what would be a good deal for the city of Fort Lauderdale if we went forward with this P3 arrangement? All we wanted to know was what was, would be a good deal, based on the value of the land?
Right.
And based on the return on that investment. I think that's all we really asked.
It is simple, but, you know, Mayor, you've also brought up, even on Bahiamar, you said just take the value of the land and then just take the percentage back, if you want to keep it really simple.
That's, that's what we're waiting for now. That was the whole point there, too. What is the value of the project and, and the value of the land? And what, you know, if we monetize our assets here, what, what, what would be a respectable return on the investment? That's all we asked. This other stuff, I mean, I guess they're trying to.
And Mayor, did you ever even see any mention of that in this report at all, what you just brought up?
It seems like they just didn't have enough information.
There's no mention of that. When we asked for financial analysis, we wanted them to tell us if the applicant had the wherewithal to do this project. We wanted to know if, what was a good amount for us to collect as a licensing fee on this site? We wanted them to review the economic modeling of the project, and none of that information is really available to us. They went off in a whole different direction, and again, relied on all incorrect information from an old draft of a comprehensive agreement that Alan had released as a public record's request. Again, just the mere fact that the front cover of their report, well, their so-called discussion, is totally incorrect in terms of the conceptual site plan that we've all been working on. I, I, there's nothing in this document that rings true.
No, I think what we do next is what we're asking John to do. I mean, obviously, we need to let John get through Bahiamar, but, you know, maybe what we do next is move forward. Now, I, I have a completely different philosophy on this whole issue, so we won't, I won't. On the whole, well, you know, from the beginning, I would prefer this public land that does not have any sort of use at all attached with it right now, just go through an RFP process. That's, that's just, that's just my gut, but I'm just kind of helping us go through this process that we're in right now. You know, when I look at Lockhart, and that was a P3, well, that was a stadium and a park, so that was a good use. I look at Bahiamar, and, and that's a hotel with a marina. We want to make that better, more world-class, so we're trying to negotiate that. When I look at this, it's like, wow, it's just three acres in downtown, and it's not really, there's nothing attached to it. So what is the best use for this property? And that's where I tend to disagree with maybe, I don't know, with some of you all. I, I, so that, that's just a different perspective, you know, do we do, we, well, we have a master, we have a master plan that says some uses that I think are good. I agree, it needs to have something on it and not just be a passive park. None of us want a passive park, myself included. But I, I would prefer the RFP process. And, you know, if we did a study, would it show that we need another concert venue or we need another, you know, a couple-story food venue? I don't know. But I'd prob, if, if, if I were doing it, I'd probably have some kind of study that said, what's the best use for this property? And move forward. But since we're here and we want to move this forward, I would say maybe we just keep moving forward, get to the comprehensive agreement, let John run some numbers, and based on their assumptions, 140 concerts a year. You know, John does a great job, we're going to, we're going to program it. Let's just see if the assumptions match up, like we're doing with Bahiamar.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's fair. And my hope for this report was that it would do an analysis of, is this a viable business plan? Does this make sense? Does this work in the city? Is this needed and so forth? That, that was at least my understanding, and it just seems clear we didn't get that at all. And I think.
I think, does it work as it needed is a whole separate conversation. Is, is, does it make a profit is probably what we, a profit that we're comfortable with giving our land away for is probably a good analysis that we still don't really have.
Great, so let's get someone to do this analysis that we're all asking for.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Wait, Commissioner.
To crunch the numbers.
We accepted the P3, we made the decision that this was something we wanted there.
A year and eight months, we've been working on.
Right, so that, that, that question has already been answered. So the question now is, is this proposal a viable proposal? And what can the city, how can we maximize the benefit of the city? That's really the question.
Which we haven't got an answer to yet.
We don't have an answer to.
Well, if you believe the assumptions that, you know, John's going to do a good job, their financing, it seems like it's kind of lining up, and we just need more information. We're not there to make the decision.
All right.
Let this move forward and come to a comprehensive agreement.
So there are a few people that signed up to speak. Can I just, can we move forward to that? Because we need to wrap this workshop up and make a decision where we're going from here. Marilyn Maman, followed by Larry Foreman, followed by Barbie Pearson. If you can come up to the podium. Marilyn, did you sign up One Stop Shop Business? Larry Foreman, same thing. Larry, followed by Barbie Pearson, followed by Mary Fertig.
I have a lot to say, but time is, again, not going to permit.
Go ahead.
I will. You two, Mr. Glassman and Dean, Mayor. You have besieged EY for not performing without getting information from them. You've unfairly attacked the auditor, Mr. Herbst. And I think that your motivation is inappropriate, it's political, and I am detested by it. You, you've not given, it's, it's easy to attack the people that are not here. Why they're not here, I think, requires investigation. To throw away the report that has significant and substantial information that you all are just glossing over, you're saying, well, everybody's saying that they didn't do the job properly. There are significant facts in here that say this project is not a, a winner.
Where is that, Mr. Foreman, in this document? Where is that? Where is that in this document?
It's throughout.
Can you specifically tell me? Because you're good at generalities, but you're really not good at specifics. Tell me where it is.
I'm very good at specifics.
Tell me where it is. Tell me where it is.
Page of the report.
Well, you should have come prepared to tell us where those specifics were.
I, no, I shouldn't have, because.
No, because this is what you do.
Our.
This is what you do. You know what you do? You hated the project from the beginning. My, I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you, and I apologize. I apologize for interrupting, because you said the mayor and I, and then you said that we did this and we did that, and we did this and we did that. Let me just tell you what we did. We read a report after we authorized a report, and we did not get in any shape, way, or form what we asked for. The reason that you're upset. Excuse me, may I just finish? May I just finish? May I just finish?
Asking a question.
I have, I've, the city auditor has not shared any of his conversations with Ian Y, with the commission. We never saw the emails that they sent yesterday when they backed out last minute and cowardly did not show up here today to meet the public and to meet the city commission. But let me just tell you why you're upset with me and the mayor, and you're just, and then you just tell me. From day one, you've hated this project, you've hated the proposal, you didn't want it, so nothing was ever going to satisfy you. And if anyone wanted to move forward with the project, you were going to find criticism. So that's what you're doing now, when you do that with the mayor and me. And I understand that we disagree on this project. So you will find fault at us for finding fault with a totally inadequate piece of work where they wouldn't even sign their name, last minute canceled out and didn't come here, and you're defending them. That's incredible.
Okay.
Incredible, incredible.
Incredible.
Incredible. Incredible.
So from day one that I've been involved, you and the mayor have been pushing this project along regardless of what the public has to say.
Totally, totally not true, Mr. Foreman. You're not, stop the generalizations. You are not the public. Two of you on the Flagler Village Civic Association board are not the public. 15,000 people live in Flagler Village. How many members are in your association?
About 35.
35 out of 15,000 people, you're telling me, are the public. How many people on your board do not even live in your neighborhood?
I don't know.
Oh, yes, you do.
I don't know.
Oh, yes, you do.
Well, tell me.
Oh, yes, you do. There are at least two people, well, because you know what? I've listened to you for a year and eight months, and I'm really tired of the misinformation. I'm tired of your spin, so now I'm just going to let it rip. I'm going to let it rip.
Good.
Okay? I'm going to let it rip, because you're using misinformation, you're totally, totally twisting the facts on this issue, on this project. And then you stand there and you won't even admit to me that half your board doesn't even live in your neighborhood, and you're trying to represent your two voices as the public. Please, that's hyperbole beyond belief.
Okay, let's get to the facts.
That's not the public. I hear from the public every day. And guess what? The public loves this project. They love the fact that the city is going to take three desolate acres across the street, not spend a nickel, not spend a nickel, get a $10 million park, get a $100 million investment, get millions of dollars a year, and even have four meetings, the applicant can have four meetings with your association to design the park. So we're going to get a park, we're going to get a cultural center that the arts community is totally enthralled with, totally enthralled with. We're going to get a...
Very inaccurate.
Oh, this is inaccurate? Okay, I'm good. I'm done, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry for my outbursts, but it's hard to listen, it's hard to listen to misinformation for a year and a half. Sorry.
Okay, I've been doing this for September, October, November, December, January.
Continue to defend the people, continue to defend the people that got paid $65,000 and didn't show up. Continue to defend the people that got paid $65,000 to give us a piece of garbage and didn't even have the courtesy to show up and address the public. But you're going to attack us for trying to defend the public who needed to have a report by people that didn't show up, and you're defending the people that didn't show up. Go ahead, sorry.
Are you done?
Oh, I'm done.
Good. I've been a member of the Flag of Village Association for five months, so when you talk about me being in your way for a year and eight months is categorically wrong, as is many of the statements that you made.
Oh, we've only heard, we've only heard from you for five months?
Now, may I speak to the substance of the work that EY did without being interrupted?
But give specifics, please.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
Specifics.
Again, I need to scroll. I don't have the specifics written, because you guys weren't even, hadn't even decided amongst all members that we were going to go forward with a discussion. We got the agreement last night, so I don't have all the, I have the specifics in my phone if I can refer to that, if you're going to give me the time.
It's the mayor's choice, but I'm okay.
To the detail. Or we could put it up on the screen. Which is your choice, other than putting the gloves?
It's not my decision. It's the mayor's decision.
Mayor, may I refer to the detail?
What is it exactly you're looking to refer to?
I'm looking at all of the statements made by EY where they say that this plan is not reasonable.
Okay, okay, that's their opinion.
That is what is my opinion and is the way that an auditor, having been a prior, an auditor in my past, the language that they're using in there, for those that are not familiar with the lingo, but John would be, is saying that this plan is not reasonable because of the exceptions that they make to the assumptions. Further, they say that they do not have all the assumptions. Further, the applicant received the draft of this report. Why didn't they not update the rendering? Why do they now have questions where this information is coming? Why are they now saying that they don't know where they got this information? Come on, it doesn't work like that. They saw the draft. John, did they see the draft?
Well, wait, wait. Sir, sir, this is not a question and answer. This is, just please state, make your statement and complete...
I need my statement. Further, further, as far as credibility, last time we were here on September 21, when I first joined the Flag of Village Committee, it was stated that we were going to see 250 events a year. 250. Now we're talking about 140. Why is somebody on the commission not questioning the credibility of the statements that are made by the applicant? Why is it in turn being asked of EY, who is not here, to validate their question, their statements? So also, when we talk about credibility, what about the lease that was being waived last time in front of you to convince you that this was not going to be another Revolution Live? When we see that that property was sold, what credibility does a lease for property that was sold to a new owner who we don't know how they're going to handle that property? What questions were asked of the applicant to understand the credibility? I read this report with the gaps that are missing because the applicant didn't receive or didn't provide the information as a credibility issue along with a plan that does not work.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments.
And I totally disagree with everything you just said.
Well...
Just for the record, thanks.
You really should have talked after I've left the...
Barbie Pearson, wait, wait, sir, sir, your time is up. Please, have a seat.
I know, but if he's going to talk to me...
He has the right to talk.
Yes.
We gave you a lot of time. You have the opportunity to speak.
But he's allowed to talk.
You're not going to monopolize this discussion. Sir, please sit down.
Yes, none of what you said is substantiated in the discussion that was presented to us by supposedly EY, although it's hard to know, because they never signed their name or anything else.
Barbie Pearson, are you here? Okay. Mary, Mary Fertig, followed by...
I'll come up next. Mary.
Mary Fertig, followed by Maggie Hunt.
I've spent a lot of years with people trying to intimidate us at this, not just this podium, but throughout. And so I, but I'm not going to be intimidated, because I'm going to stand up, because this is important, and Steve and I are friends, so even though it sounds like we aren't right now...
No, we are, Mary, and I, please don't, it's not intimidation.
Commissioner, let her speak, please.
Go ahead.
Let her speak, please.
Okay. On page five, "In order to fulfill its obligation under chapter whatever of the state statutes, the city undertook an analysis of the proposal in the following key areas." Okay, if you did it and you're not satisfied with it, do what you did with the city manager a couple weeks ago and instruct him to get somebody else to do the job the way you want it done. That's my first point. My second point is, there's a lot of unknowns here. Who gave them the documents? What did they base their analysis on? I think there are a lot of questions.
I think we're asking the same questions, Mary.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mary, can you just repeat your first point? I'm sorry, I'm looking on page five.
Point is, the first sentence says, "In order to fulfill its obligation." And I remember sitting here and listening. Mr. Boalow said he was able to do an in-house, I may not be exact quote, but he could do the comprehensive agreement in-house, he had the expertise in-house to do that. Mr. Herbst was very clear that he did not, and that was going to go for an outside analysis, okay? If you're not happy with that, then do the right thing, but don't do this or any other deal without a solid financial analysis. That's the point I wanted to make. The next...
But Mary, it says, the report says that we did do that. It says that the city undertook an analysis of the proposal in the following key areas, and then lists the three areas that the city did.
I understand, but I think we both know, when they say the city, they're talking about you hired Ernst &amp; Young to do that for you. So the, if this is a summarized version, I would like to see the full version, maybe there's something else in there, I don't know. And I, I just, I just find this whole thing very unpleasant today, and I just have to say, you keep scheduling these things with no backup.
Well, we just got the backup ourselves.
I know, Mayor, and I don't understand why, and this isn't, this isn't you, but I just don't understand why you're going ahead when you...
Well, we're not going ahead.
Listen, it's bad enough we don't have the information, but that you don't have it, and you're having, being asked to make decisions in my mind is worse. So when you saw you didn't have it, I just wish somebody would have called it off.
Yeah, no, honestly, Mary, Mary, I haven't even read this thing, because we just got it.
Okay.
And I'm just...
Well, if you read it, you'll see there's actually...
I'm just looking at the pictures, you know?
There are actually some valid points.
Mayor, it takes 10 minutes to read, that's all it takes.
I didn't even have 10 minutes.
Okay.
And it deserves more than 10 minutes' worth of time to try to read between the lines to see exactly what you're trying to get at.
Mary, what did you think of the document? You're a smart, smart person.
I actually sent this to several people I know who aren't in the city of Fort Lauderdale who do this kind of thing for a living, and you and I will talk about, I don't want to stand here and tell you what they said. I don't think you're going to like what they said. So I am encouraging you to go the course you went with Bahi Mar. If you don't want to do Ernst &amp; Young, hire another. There are plenty of firms out there that do this. Get it done. You know what questions you need to have answered. You know that information has to be supplied. Apparently, it's now ready to supply. You have a comprehensive agreement that's almost ready. I don't see why you can't hand this over to some, to another firm if you're not happy and get an analysis that you can share with the people who actually own the land. And I have to say one final thing. I wasn't going to say this, and they probably won't like that I'm saying it. I served for many years, I have served for many years on the school board of Byrd County Audit Committee. I served many years with both Mr. Herbst and Ms. Grant, who I've known for over 30 years and I have the highest regard for. And it's been very disturbing to sit here today and listen to so much yelling when I just think we all have the same common goal for our city, which is to have the best city we can have. So with that, I will leave.
Agreed, all right.
Yes, definitely.
Maggie Hunt? You have two hours. No, I'm just kidding.
I just have a really quick question that you don't really have to answer here. Maybe in a commission meeting or something, you can answer it. But I really agree with Commissioner Maritis's point. I'd just like to know why the, I guess it's an RFP process you go through to find out what the, what the market needs for this, for projects, and why that maybe wasn't done before we accepted a...
Well, we kind of already have gone past that stage.
Yeah, I know. I just would, because for future projects, you know, I mean, I'd just like to know why we skipped. Like I said, you don't need to answer it here, because I know you've gone past it. I'd just like to know, so for future things, why it was skipped. We're kind of landlocked, and we don't have a lot of park ground and stuff.
Well, honestly, Maggie, you know, part of the, part of the unsolicited proposal methodology allows other people to come in and make proposals during, during, during the timeframe in which this whole process is undertaken.
So why would we...
Someone steps forward, says, here, here's a proposal. The commission makes a decision either to accept it or not. If the commission accepts it, then there's an opportunity for someone to come in and say, hey, well, we have, we have something different we'd like to do there. And that didn't happen.
So why is the option not to say, we're not accepting anything until we know what our market needs here?
Say that again.
I believe we could go through a process similar to what you're describing, but the commission did decide to accept the unsolicited proposal. Four out of five of us did. And so it's just a different philosophical position, and they, they did make the decision to move forward and accept this and explore it and to make sure the financials line up and everything, because they did like it. So I believe, like the mayor said, we probably missed that window.
Right, right, we missed it. I'd just like to know for future, not to be answered here, why we didn't do that, and I, because I think we should do it for future projects.
Well, we still have the opportunity, this is still a process on...
Oh, okay, so, I mean, I'd like to know, I mean, maybe we have too many music, I don't think we have too many, but we just need to know what should go, what the market should, from an expert.
Well, that's, that was the original purpose of trying to find out what the maximum marketability was for this...
Oh, this report was supposed to have that?
This report was supposed to come back with an opinion.
Okay, I see that.
Like, what's the best deal for the city?
So we just need another report.
Need another report. And also, yeah, and also, Chris and Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, but at any point, could someone come to Commissioner or come to the mayor and say, hey, I've got a great idea for one-stop-shop, and I'd like to talk to you about it? What to do on that land? Could anyone do that at any point?
You've gone through a process right now where you are, you've accepted, you've accepted this project.
Sure.
We're working on the comprehensive agreement.
Sure.
So you would have to basically have, you'd have to stop this process and start.
Sure, exactly. If we wanted to.
Until you sign the comprehensive agreement.
Exactly, if we wanted to.
But someone couldn't come in and say, you know, we have a better idea. What did you think? Because then you're, that competition window is closed under the statute.
Sure, but someone could say, hey, Commissioner, stop this project. We've got a great new idea. Someone could do that.
So I had that conversation with numerous people, but it's not my district, and I know Steve didn't like that, but I did have that conversation with a lot of people, and I did go back and look at the master plan for this, the whole downtown and everything, and, but you all chose to go in this direction. So we did have a conversation about making it a park.
Great, but you could...
But Commissioner, we cannot proactively put out an RFP. It would be bad faith.
We don't need, that's the thing. The RFP is a red herring. We don't need...
Also a bad faith. We can't, like...
No, we could have done it.
I'm saying, at this point...
At this point, we could have done it.
You'd have to reject, you'd have to formally reject this project.
I just want people to understand, the commission at any point can say, hey, we don't want to do this anymore. Stop. We want to go in a completely different direction. Hold on, hold on, hold on, just walk with me. Can't the commission do that, Alan?
If you reject the current project.
Exactly, exactly. So any commissioner, if they want, can say, hey, here's a great new idea, Commission. Let's stop this project and share a different, a completely new idea. So Maggie, I just want you to understand, anyone can come up with new ideas. Anyone can share new possibilities.
And I did try that, Maggie, but it didn't work.
Right, right, and, but I just want the public to know...
It is a process, yes, you're right.
That the commission can stop this at any point, and that's not the will of the commission at this point. But anyone can still explore opportunities, new ideas, and that can be a discussion we can all have up here at any point.
The only caveat to that, though, just to be careful, is if someone comes up with an idea and we consider that idea in comparison to the one-stop-shop, that you can't do.
Great, got it, got it. But, right, and Maggie, I don't know if you were here, but in September, we did have a six-hour workshop on this. Were you, were you part of that?
I was.
Okay, but we did have a six-hour workshop.
Okay, going forward. Commissioner, hold on, just...
...proposal early on, from folks from Mass District, speaking to my... We had a proposal early on that came in, in competition with this for the Mass District headed by Dylan.
Dylan, right, yeah, Dylan's...
But they never took it.
With affordable housing. With affordable housing.
And we ended up here.
Right.
Through a consensus that this is the path we wanted to take, so...
Exactly.
He never actually formally proposed it, nor he...
He imposed his will.
Yes.
As most people do.
Yeah.
While we're trying to make decisions, and we considered it, but we moved down this path to get here.
Right.
I think we just need...
I believe that was a high-rise residential tower.
We had a whole bunch of stuff. I was just so... I was more confused with that than you are with this.
Yeah.
But I guess what we need to do, Mayor, or...
Yeah, what are our next steps?
We need to figure out where we want to go.
Right. So next steps, we're sort of... I mean, I think we're almost back to first base here.
I don't know about first base.
I hate to say it, but Alan, what are our options here?
Well, you do want to have an analysis that you've asked for, right? The comprehensive agreement, again, probably in a few days, I can get that to you, so that's not really an issue. There'll be some back and forth with the proposal, so I'm not too concerned on that side. But it's your will as to what diligence you want to do from here with regards to analyzing, whether it be the business plan. I mean, I don't know if any of you have specific concerns that you want to address, but that's the direction I think staff would need to... Okay, at this point, what aspects of this do we want looked at specifically, and how do we proceed to do that?
Mayor, does staff talk to each other? Well, what do you want to say?
Well, what I would like to say is...
Let's get to the...
We have a city auditor. We have a city attorney. We've been waiting for a financial analysis from the city auditor. We've been waiting for a comprehensive agreement from the city attorney. I would suggest that these two people get together tomorrow and start putting their heads together. They're both smart people with departments. I don't see any reason why they can't come up with the information that we're going to need, so that we get the financial analysis and we get the comprehensive agreement. And Alan said that can be in March, and we just deal with the information that we're presented with. But they need to work... They need to work together.
You think we can do this internally?
Well, we... No, we have been working together, but two things. One, I can't do any financial analysis.
I understand.
It's beyond my charter to do that. Two, a lot of the decisions that are left in limbo are yours. I can't make those decisions. John can't make those decisions. Chris can't make those decisions.
Right.
So that's what's going to be left on the table once you get this agreement here. These are decisions you're going to have to make. So John and I have communicated, Chris and I communicated on this, but these are just things that we can't get across the finish line without you.
Right. Well, give us the tools. Give us the information. Come back in March. Let's move forward. We have a wealth of information up until this point. If need be, you both can sit down with the applicant for whatever is missing, or at least to correct the record from what we received from Ernst &amp; Young, because it's totally incorrect. So correct all that information with each other. And I have faith that between you and everyone else on the staff, you can come to us, and as you said, we have to make the decisions at the end of the day. So I feel...
The goal is to tell the commission, you know, come to us with an analysis of what would be the best deal for the city based on current market conditions. What are people getting in return on investment? And is that something, John, you feel comfortable in bringing to the commission, that kind of report?
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you repeat that?
I'll repeat it.